Good afternoon. My name is Kathleen Brown, Chair of the Virginia Beach School Board, and I call this meeting on May 27, 2025 to order. This is the Administrative, Informal, and Workshop Session. At this time, Madam Clerk, would you please announce the role?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the School Board Chamber are Chair Brown, Vice Chair Weems, Mr. Bowen Steele, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Mr. Cummings, Ms. Dwyer, Ms. Felton, Dr. Green, and Ms. Rogers. And presently online is Ms. Melnick. And Ms. Melnick, for the record, can you state the reason why you are zooming in?
Yes, unfortunately, I'm still really sick. So I'm sorry to my colleagues, and I'm sorry to the public, but I am logged in and 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 logged in.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. That brings us to Administrative Matters and Reports. Do any board members have anything to report? I do have a few items, but I'll open the floor. Okay, seeing none. The first is that I'm going to pass out the June one-to-one sign-ups for meetings with Dr. Robertson. When everyone's done with this, if they could hand it back to me so that I can make sure everyone's gotten the opportunity to sign up, that would be great. The second matter is our retreat agenda. The draft agenda is in front of you in your packet. We need to kind of get a quick turnaround, so I tried to accommodate everybody's requests. Some of them have slightly different titles. Ms. Rogers had a couple of requests that fall under gifted there. Dr. Green had asked if we could do the Jericho Road item in the retreat, so that's in there. And Mr. Cummings asked about FURPA, so. And then this board had a couple of other items that have come up frequently, and so those are represented here. Are there any thoughts, additions, or modifications to this draft as presented?
Just an apology, Chair Brown. The Jericho Road item, we changed to just read Jericho Road. It does not, and it will not read Plan for Disposal. So that was updated late Friday, and I guess it did not make the packet here. So the Jericho Road agenda item simply says Jericho Road.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and I think that's probably the best best choice of words so that people don't get concerned there. Anyone else? I don't have my buttons up, so, okay. Moving on, so we are nearing June, and so Vice Chair Weems and I would like to hear committee requests. If you want to change your committees, get rid of a committee, get on a committee. Of course, we can't honor every single request with this many board members, but this is the time to do so and make those requests. So if you could send those by June 3, that will be on information June 9 and on action at the following meeting. We have a reminder about the Superintendent's Evaluation, June 3. That is at 4:00 PM. That's next Tuesday. And your materials are in your email inbox. Dr. Robertson, I just asked that you bump that back up to the top, just in case anybody has it buried. And then the other thing that's in front of us is an administrative matter during our April 22 school meeting, the board unanimously approved a modification to Bylaw 138. There are some meeting dates reflective of that bylaw change. I am going to ask that we add this to the agenda if there's no objections to that. Okay? All right, and that brings us now to our presentation, Strategic Schools Support Update, finishing strong, and we welcome Matthew Delaney, Chief Schools Officer.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chairwoman Weems, School Board Members, and Dr. Robertson. Throughout the year, you receive updates. At the beginning of the year, we give you an opening of school update. Dr. Calucci gave you a mid-year update on some data points, and I'm here today to kind of give you a brief on how we provide strategic support as we look to finish the school year on a strong note. We believe the school support process we have in place allows us to produce the results that, as you heard from Dr. Robertson pretty passionately at our last meeting, that we're a top-performing school division as a result of this. Last time we reviewed the school support process was 2023. Obviously, that's prior to several of the newer members on the school board, so a workshop today, we felt would also be beneficial to walk through that as well. I'm going to give you an overview of some key components of the support process and how we respond to student needs, considerations to the school support process for the current year, and we're going to finish which steps that we are taking to close out the year. I think it's important to note that the school support process is led by the Department of School Leadership, the Department of Teaching and Learning. However, all departments, budget, planning, innovation, accountability, human resources, technology, community engagement, schools, division services, they all play a really integral role in the supports that we put in practice for our schools. One of the things we really work with our building leaders on is to ensure there's alignment from division priorities all the way down to what goes on in the classroom. And so this slide really demonstrates that alignment. If you look at the top of that funnel, it's the Strategic Action Agenda, and most of you, I'm sure, are aware, every year, we provide our building leaders with a Strategic Action Agenda that outlines the priorities for the upcoming year. We typically give that to them in late April, early May, and it becomes really the focal point of our Summer Leadership Conference with our building leaders. It's the professional learning we provide for them during those sessions. It's also a key component of what drives the essential learning for our teachers that they receive over the summer, and many of them receive it at our D-Tol Conference in August. So we use this as a really a kind of guidepost to then move forward to what we call is our school-based concept map. All of our schools and centers have their own unique school concept map, and that's really designed to provide an overview of the priorities for that school year. It's a more simplistic level of the Strategic Action Agenda. We talk to our schools about it really essentially being their elevator speech. So we not encourage any board member, when you go to a school to visit, ask to see the concept map. They're usually prominently displayed in in school classrooms or in different areas. We find it's just a very useful tool to ground the work for the year. From the school concept map, we move to what we call the Plan for Continuous Improvement, or the PCI. I'm going to go a little more in detail on that in the next slide, but all schools are required to develop this plan, and they do this in collaboration with the Department of School Leadership and with the Department of Teaching and Learning. And then the final piece of alignment occurs in the classrooms, is principals, assistant principals, coaches, central support staff, observe classroom instruction, provide feedback to our teachers that ensure we're reaching the desired student outcomes. One of the things we really work hard on with our building leaders and others is to what we call decouple evaluation from observation feedback, to turn it more into a coaching cycle than you're being judged on your work. And we really work hard with our leaders on developing that component. On the slide here, you see the Plan for Continuous Improvement. It's the guiding document for us, where schools set goals based on multiple data points. Currently, schools set a literacy goal, a math goal, a science goal, or a future-ready goal. Sometimes the goals may refer to specific reporting groups, or where gaps in performance are greater, or sometimes the goals are required by the, based on VDOE recommendations or direction. As they create these goals, again, in collaboration with DOSL and D-Tol, action steps are put in place along with a process for monitoring these steps. The PCI is reviewed at the beginning of the year as a guide and used as a guide tool during school support meetings. It's updated the mid-year point to add or remove action steps, and it's finalized at the end of the year. It's important to note that we're going to revise the document to better align with the new VDOE School Performance Framework that you've seen before, as well as the new Strategic Plan Compass to 2030. So we will be updating this document over the summer. Now, in terms of the school support process, this is, again, a very unique process used in Virginia Beach City Public Schools over the past decade. It's a collaborative problem-solving approach that brings leaders from school leadership, curriculum, testing, special education, and student support services offices to the table with our school leaders. When I say school leaders, I'm also referring to teacher leaders, instructional leadership teams, coaches at the school level, to ensure a comprehensive review of progress and needs is regularly analyzed and how we respond to those. All schools have regularly scheduled school support process meetings and check-ins with central support leaders, and it begins over the summer with one-to-one summer meetings with the principal and their DOSL director. Once the school year begins, feedback is provided by both school leadership and teaching and learning to the instructional leadership teams on alignment between the Strategic Action Agenda and the school-based concept map and the goals they've set in the PCI. A comprehensive data analysis is conducted to inform the Plan for School Support. For example, we look at SOL performance beyond just schools. We'll go as deep as student data reports based on a question or based on a standard to identify potential ways to respond. You've heard conversation around vowels and the NWA map. That data as well we look at. We look at local assessment data and our navigational marker data. As a review, navigational marker data is the data that Dr. Manick, he talks a lot about when we do the strategic plan review throughout the year of all those other components that we look at, such as percentage of students taking advanced coursework would be an example. Additionally, we provide more support to our early-career principals in a variety of ways. Schools are placed at the beginning of the year in a category of needing universal, targeted, or intensive support. This ensures that schools receive what we believe is needed differentiated support. They need to achieve the educational excellence and remain fully accredited. To be clear, our schools are, all of our schools are provided with incredible amount of universal support, such as curriculum, professional learning resources, tutoring resources, and funds, and fundings for materials. We're fortunate enough to have funds for school-based specialists, such as our GRTs, our ITS, as our instructional technology specialists, and our library media specialists, literacy coaches in all schools, and many of our schools have a math coach. The vast majority of our schools, as you can see on the slide, in center, 68 are in the universal category, and then we provide differentiated support to our targeted intensive schools. Differentiated support could take the, take shape in terms of more collaborative planning days for staff, additional tutoring money, or additional tutoring support, additional coaching support to help the instructional program. I think you guys are all well aware of some of the changes that have come down for the Virginia Department of Education this year. I'm going to highlight a couple of those changes, but it has impacted or modified the conversations we have in school support meetings to ensure there's a comfort level amongst our building-level teachers and staff for what they're being asked to do. The first one I'll discuss is the School Performance and Support Framework. You heard an update on this from Dr. Legata earlier in the school year. We also had a session with Dr. Coons at the time from the VDOE, as you recall, where she walked through some of these with a few board members who were present, and Mr. Callen, Ms. Rogers, I believe you were there as well when that occurred. We developed, out of that process, we had to develop individualized plans with schools that were identified as targeted support and improvement schools by the VDOE. Those plans were approved, and we modified them throughout the year as required. Much of the work around the Strategic Framework, School Performance and Support Framework, I'm sorry, involved our high schools, where they had their increased levels on the focus on the three Es of enrollment, enlistment, and employment. You've heard us talk about working to increase dual enrollment offerings with support for students taking college-level courses for the first time. We've had an increase in AP offerings, an increase in AP exam registration with support for those students. We've increased or worked to increase the number of seniors that take the ASVAB assessment. Oftentimes, people view that as just a military assessment, but it's actually a very effective career and college readiness assessment. We're trying to change that mindset with more kids having that opportunity to take it. And finally, there continues to be a heightened focus in developing meaningful work-based learning experiences for our students. And again, we greatly appreciate the support the school board has provided in that area and the necessary boost. In terms of the Virginia Literacy Act implementation, there's just been a continued amount of support with the implementation of Virginia Language and Literacy Screening System. You know it as vowels, and student reading plans in grades kindergarten through third grade. If you recall at the last meeting, Dr. Kelly shared that the last, that this will be extended to grades four through eight next school year, and we recently received some information on what that should look like to a degree. We continue to support administrators and teachers with the completion of evidence-based literacy instruction modules. You also hear that as EBLI. And then we have ongoing professional development that's been provided on implementation of evidence-based literacy instruction best practices. Dr. Calucci gave you a very heavy overview of that mid-year when they talked about the roles and responsibility of Department of Teaching and Learning and the work that her coordinators, specialists, and coaches have done. It's really been quite phenomenal. In terms of curriculum support, they also deserve a lot of credit in this area as well. With the new standards, we've been very intentional in our efforts to enhance teacher clarity of new standards in math and language arts by maximizing our coaches and what we call our professional learning communities. The support has included a significant emphasis on the effective delivery of instruction in the new core English Language Arts Program and the updated math curriculum. And there's been ongoing professional development that's provided to principals on leading the improvement implementation cycle at monthly Principal League meetings. It's also been embedded in the professional development, what we call immersive experiences with our leaders, and their conducted learning walks of observation, determined transfer from what's going on in the professional learning community to classroom instruction. Again, I'd like to credit my directors, Dr. Hamlin and her team, and Dr. Smith and Dr. Brower, have worked very heavily with our principals on providing that level of training. Now, as we look to finish the year strong, we are knee-deep into testing, as I'm sure you're aware, and it's, this is the time of year where the rubber meets the road for us and causes a lot of sleepless nights for for all of us, as we're praying for our kids to really do the best they can and to be ready to go. And we think we've finished strong with this school support process because we use mid-year performance data and formative assessment data to identify areas not only of improvement but also of enrichment, resulting in the delivery of differentiated support strategies. If you think about the new support framework, it does have that growth component that is not, what we used to have is growth. The growth is now, what was your predicted score and what was your actual score. So that enrichment area is of, and heightened focus with our students. School leadership teams in collaboration with central support have developed remediation expedited retesting initiatives. Resources are provided to assist in the implementation. And there's a focus on continuing to optimize the impact of all in tutoring programs. And as results arrive, and we're doing this right now, we deploy central office support staff and strategically reassign school-based coaches in response to student performance trend and identified needs. We essentially send people to where the need is, and in many instances, they move out of their current assignment to go support in those areas. So in conclusion, the collective efforts of central support staff, building leadership teams, and teachers during the school support process sends the message that we address student learning and student outcomes from a team approach. We use real-time data throughout the year to respond to students based on the understanding demonstrated through assessments, and we will use the information as indicated in the new framework to guide our work as we have with the previous framework. We take, we all take ownership of the results, how we celebrate the results, and how we continue to improve. So at this time, we would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Ms. Melnick?
Mr. Delaney, you just mentioned vowels for grades four through eight. You said we have received some information about that to a degree.
Yes.
What does that mean?
We've provided some, we've been provided with some guidance on how we either handle fourth and eighth grade in terms of screening next year and based on the SOL performance. We're still going through that information to ensure what is it going to look like for implementation at our schools. We don't have enough data right now to really come back with concrete examples of it, but they've talked about some things around who they might expect to be screened and those students that may require a reading plan next year. Candidly, we talk about the biggest kind of area of concern right now is that they are saying that students that failed the SOL should be considered for screening, and so we may see increased numbers based on that. We weren't, we weren't looking for that level of information, to be candid, Ms. Melnick. We thought it might be a different sliding scale.
All right, so, but our teachers are going to be okay?
Well, I think what I'm proud of that I just outlined is what, it's, all of us are going to work collaboratively together to ensure they're okay. I think you've seen that this year with the implementation of of the challenge we had with the Virginia Literacy Act. It was a heavy lift, but I think all in all, we're very proud of how our teachers have been able to go through that based on the work I just shared of our school support process. We're not going to have teachers operating on an island. We're going to support our schools and support our principals to ensure they have what they need to do what, do its ask. I'm pretty confident in that.
Yeah, I appreciate that so much.
Ms. Rogers, thank you for the presentation. Just to piggyback off of what Mrs. Melnick was talking about with the vowels, because it's going to be new in in the middle school, are we going to then be using that thrive time if those students need that? I want to make sure that they're still going to get their electives.
Yeah, that would be an area, that's why we're pretty excited about it, and that was part of the planning to go to a new schedule. We were anticipating this need.
Okay, good.
And we've already started working through Dr. Calucci's team and and Dr. Smith with principals on engaging with the reading specialists on what this might look like. So I think we're, we're not surprised by this need.
Yeah, that's good, and especially because I know that in the elementary levels, that a lot of time, the students are pulled out during their time when they're doing English language learning, but because there's a bell schedule, it's really different at the middle school. So that's why I wanted to make sure that, you know, we're looking at the thrive time and all of that.
They're given, one thing I will share is the VDOE has given us a lot of flexibility on how to implement this plan, which we're grateful for.
Oh, good, 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 good. And then the other question that I had was kind of more around, you guys are talking a lot in your curriculum and support about enhancing teacher clarity and supporting delivery instruction, and then you said a little bit about also supporting the administrations, like the principals' APs. Can you talk a little bit more about that?
Sure. We, we operate from, we do very much a research-based practices with all of our work, and we talk a lot about what we call the Wallace Foundation. I'm going to go a little deeper on this because you asked.
Please do.
Wallace Foundation, research on the investment necessary to drive school outcome is truly with the principal, and it's in three areas of instruction, people and organization. So we really work hard with Department of Teaching and Learning to increase the instructional capacity of our principals and assistant principals across the board. It's much different than many of you probably remember your principals and assistant principals. You know, we average about 12,000 classroom observations documented a year, so our principals are really expected to drive the instructional programming and utilize the great amount of resources we have to make those decisions to support our teachers.
Great, okay, all right. I'll catch up with you more about, more about that because I definitely want to hear more.
Okay.
Mr. Culpepper?
Thanks for that presentation, Mr. Delaney, and for those answers. My question's actually a pretty easy one. I wasn't aware the ASVAB is used outside of the military. Can you give me a brief idea of who else uses it and for what purpose?
Well, I'll have to get back to you on who else uses it for what purpose, but I will tell you, we've been in active conversations with the military because this is part of the three Es of enlistment and getting those results, results back. We're actually being asked to try to accumulate data on how our students are performing on that from the VDOE, so we're working closely with the military on that end. But I think what we're finding great opportunity is the information it provides back to a student from a college and career readiness component that I don't think they were always aware of, that it does that. So I, let me get, let me get back to you on who else is using it that way, but that's one that the state has identified as one or un-three's framework.
Okay. I think what I understood, you were saying basically is that right now, we're working with the military and VDOE, kind of collecting information about how our students are doing on it.
Yes, and I think we're getting good, we're getting good feedback on how to streamline it, where schools can get that more closely and not have to go back to the student or back to the family saying, can you release that data to us? That was kind of how it was set up already, to where now we can see it and move, move through that end. I mean, typically, as you probably are aware, it was mostly done through our NJRTC programs, and then you'd have some kids sign up. We're being a little more aggressive with individuals now to say, hey, this is a great opportunity for you to learn a little more about what you may want to do that's might be beyond enlistment, but it's a good component.
That's what I was just going to say. That sounds like the flip side of it, which is the students who wouldn't necessarily have taken it before are taking it anyway, and now they've got an idea where the doors are open to them.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Felton?
Thank you, Chair Brown. Ms. Delaney, thank you so much for this presentation. Going back to your curriculum support, when you named that provide ongoing professional development for our teachers, the criteria, will this be internal as well as external for our teachers? What type of programs are we looking at to enhance their ongoing professional, and how would that enhance them as well as being more productive?
Most of it was done as an internal component from a, you know, understanding how to use the resources. But if you look at the evidence-based literacy instruction modules were provided by the Virginia Department of Education, so those were modules that were developed outside of the school division. We've been fortunate as well that the VDOE has offered office hours, Dr. Calucci, correct me if I'm wrong, but office hours that we can go in and and learn more about the decisions they're making and providing input throughout the process. As we move forward with the curriculum changes, most of it is done internal because we have great coaches and we have great specialists and coordinators that help ensure that's aligned to our curriculum. They typically also understand, have great relationships with our teachers and our building leaders. So I think the comfort level is greater with our internal professional learning.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you so much for this presentation. I do have a couple of questions, particularly to the slide that Mr. Culpepper mentioned, slide number seven, when we're talking about ASVAB participation. So I am aware that ASVAB participation plays into the accreditation standards, correct?
It can pay, play into the enlistment component of the accreditation framework when they start to look at that three Es score framework. So there's a score that could be tied to that. I'd have to, I'm not an expert on that, Ms. Brown, that I have to get you greater detail from Dr. Manick's office.
Yeah, participation is not required. It's, it just counts towards the, one of the three Es for those that participate in the ASVAB and get certain scores.
Okay, so it does, it does help us when a student participates in ASVAB. And the reason that I ask is because I'm getting reports from many high school employees that we, as a division, are requiring our students to take the ASVABs unless they opt out. Is this true?
We have not created, at this point in time, an expectation that all kids are testing in the ASVAB. We're offering it to large, I'd like to know the schools so we can go back to you. I know some schools have made it a little more enticing for their seniors that have not taken it to show this is a great opportunity from a college and career civic readiness component, but we have not said essentially that it is a required assessment to give.
Okay, so we're not requiring it division-wide for all high schools?
Correct.
It's, it may just be isolated site-based decisions.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And, and much like Mr. Culpepper mentioned, I would be interested to hear what other opportunities become available with the ASVAB participation. And Ms. Melnick, looks like she has one more question?
Yes, and that is directly related to your comment, Chair Brown. Mr. Delaney, I remember a past presentation, and I'll pull up the, the video, where the ASVAB was mentioned specifically, and there were a lot of raised eyebrows from board members about what that meant, and how many students were actually going to have to take that. We were very concerned about that in the beginning, and I'm hearing exactly what Mrs. Brown is hearing, that it actually helps us when a lot of students are taking those, and they are pushing them. And so I just like some clarification on that. You know, I'll be honest, when you sit up on that dais, it's one way, but when you watch from home, it's completely different. And so I'm hearing, seeing things and seeing things differently two times in a row.
Let me, let me provide that clarity for you. We are emphasizing the utilization of ASVAB, so you're correct on that end.
Yes.
We are trying to increase the number of students that participate in the ASVAB for two reasons. As I shared, one was the college, I'm sorry, the career readiness component. The other component of what lies into the school support framework, not the school support, school performance and support framework around how we are credited based on that three Es framework. So there is definitely some areas where you begin to look at student day So there is definitely some areas where you begin to look at student data and see what students may not have certain components of that framework that you are encouraging to take the ASVAB.
Yes.
Students, for example, that are not taking AP courses or dual enrollment courses, or have other components of that three Es, we do look at that ASVAB as being an assessment they could use. So I hope that provides the clarity. We are emphasizing the use of it at a greater level than we ever have previously, but we are not requiring that across the board.
No, I know we, yes, but it's very confusing to families who hear this, who are not watching right now, um, but are hearing this information, and, and that, that is their reality, and they, they are hearing that it's being pushed. But I think that this board and, and our community needs to understand that this is coming from the state. The VDOE is pushing this, and, and this is something they want to see, and this is very confusing for our families, very confusing.
Yeah, so, I, I mean, I'm just kind of in the lines of, of what she was saying, um, I, and I'll follow up with Dr. Robertson, uh, one-to-one about which schools I've heard this in, but I have heard, um, about trying to find a way, reports of trying to find a way to make sure that the opt-out form is difficult to locate, um, from the parent's side, um, I've heard about it from staff's side. In fact, some staff members that don't feel so great about it and feel like they may want to leave our division, um, over it, and, and that I find concerning. Um, I don't have, I mean, I have no, no, uh, issue with increased ASVAB participation, um, much like increased dual enrollment participation and AP participation, um, and I'm speaking in my, my personal capacity. I want it to be for the reasons that it's right for the student, um, and what the student desires, not because, um, we made them feel like they had to do so. But I, I do appreciate all this. I know it's a heavy lift, and, and so I thank you for, you know, all of your work, and I know that we have to, um, work to fit within the new framework, and so I, I do appreciate everything very much, so.
Dr. Green?
Thank you, and my comments are in reference to the ASVAB and the experiences, um, that I remember, but I'm sure they have changed, um, a little bit. When school counselors were working with students with their career plans, within that context, sometimes students were asked whether or not they want to take that, and keep in mind that their parents sign off annually, and, and please correct me, Mr., um, Delaney, if I'm wrong, that the parents do still review the career and academic plan as well annually. That includes some of the different measures typically that may not always be available to all students. And it does give us a good indication of possibly what career paths a student, you know, may be interested in if they're uncertain as well.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it, and thank you for all the hard work you're doing. Um, we have time to start our closed session, so Vice Chair Williams, would you please read into close?
I move that the school board recesses into closed session in accordance with the exceptions to open meetings law and set forth in Code of Virginia 2.2-3711, Part 8, Paragraphs 1, 2, 7, 8, is amended to deliberate on the following matters. One, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, and evaluation of performance of departments or schools of public institutions of higher education, where such evaluation will necessarily involve discussion of the performance of specific, specific individuals. Any teacher shall be permitted to be present during a closed meeting in which there is a discussion or consideration of a disciplinary matter that involves the teacher and some student, and the student involved is the matter, in the matter is present, provided that the teacher makes a written request to be present to the presiding officer or the appropriate board. Nothing in this subdivision, however, shall be construed to authorize a closed meeting by a local governing body or an elected school board to discuss compensation matters that affect the membership of such body or board collectively. Two, discussion or consideration of admission or disciplinary matters or any other matters that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning any student of any public institution of higher education in the Commonwealth or any state school system. However, any such student, legal counsel, and if the student is in mind or the student's parents or legal guardians, shall be permitted to be present during the taking of testimony or presentation of evidence at a closed meeting if such student, parents, or guardians so request in writing, and such request is submitted to the presiding officer of the appropriate board. Seven, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in open meetings would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. For this purpose of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or on which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. Eight, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters, requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public bodies is in attendance or is consulted on a matter, namely to discuss, A, discussion of superintendent's evaluation process, B, complaint concerning student conduct, C, status of pending litigation or administrative cases, D, consultation with legal counsel regarding probable litigation and pending litigation matters.
Moved by Vice Chair Williams, seconded by Mr. Culpepper. Any discussion seen on the voting board is open to go into closed session.
So Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes. The motion did pass to go into closed session, and for the record, uh, Ms. Melnick did log off of Zoom since we are going into closed session.
Thank you. Thank you.
The School Board of the City of Virginia Beach has convened a closed meeting on this day pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
All right, moved by Mr. Culpepper. It's our second. Seconded by Mr. Callen. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the vote to certify closed session.
So Madam Chair, we have ten ayes. The motion did pass for a certification of closed session.
All right, thank you. It is 5:33 PM. This informal session is adjourned, and we will reconvene at 6 PM for a formal meeting.